The hour being 10:06 in the morning, after confirming that we do have a required quorum of at least 150 registered voters present, I would like to now call this meeting to order. I'd like to also confirm that the warrant for this town meeting, the special town meeting of September 27, 2014, has been duly posted and has been duly mailed in accordance with our town's bylaw. At this point in time, I would like everyone in all of the meeting rooms to please rise for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Welcome to the special town meeting of September 27, 2014. My name is Sean Riley, and I am the town moderator. Today, we only have two articles to review and vote upon. The first is the housekeeping article to approve the transfer of some unspent money into our reserve fund. And the second article will ask for your vote whether to authorize the town to borrow the funds required to proceed with Abington's proposed school construction project and to accept the state construction grant which has been offered to the town by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. For those of you who may be attending your first town meeting, we're very happy that you've taken the time to exercise your right to take part in your town's legislative body. For those of you who regularly attend our town meetings, we greatly appreciate your continued dedication to the well-being of our town. We will do our best to move the meeting along while also providing reasonable time to allow for open debate and to answer your questions. Seated with me today is your town clerk, Leanne Adams. Next to Leanne is our town council attorney Lauren Goldberg of Colton Menon Page, and of course, our town manager, Mr. Rick LaFond. Mrs. Adams will be serving as the clerk of the town meeting, will be recording the wording of any motions and the results of any votes taken by you, the resident registered voters. Attorney Goldberg will be available to answer any legal questions which may arise, and together with the town clerk and the town manager, they will try to help me as the moderator make sure that we run this town meeting in accordance with proper procedure and as smoothly as possible. I would also like to first extend a warm Abington welcome to our state representative, Mr. Jeff Deal, and our state senator, Mr. John Keenan. We appreciate your attendance here at this special town meeting. We ask that you abide by the following rules and guidelines during town meeting in order to allow you the opportunity to ask questions, share your opinions, or to simply listen to the debate. If you would like to make a statement or ask a question, please stand near the microphone in the middle of the room or in the room that you're standing, whatever's closest to you. And the moderator will recognize you at the earliest available moment and ask you to then address the meeting. I must require that you use one of the microphones in order to ensure that everyone at this town meeting can hear you, and because this town meeting is being recorded for later playback on cable TV. Please state your name and your street address before you begin speaking so that our town clerk can properly record the minutes of this town meeting. Please know that if you are presently seated in the gym or in the cafeteria or in the music room, whomever is speaking will be on camera and they will be seen and heard in the other meeting areas over each room speaker system and video screens. Deputy Moderator Bob Kelly will be overseeing the meeting in the cafeteria and will alert me if anyone in the cafeteria would like to make a statement or ask a question. Likewise, Assistant Moderator Jack Buckley will oversee the meeting if additional overflow capacity is required in the music room. We ask that everyone in attendance here today, please maintain quiet while another resident is speaking, and to extend every courtesy to others in the same room. Please make sure that all comments and questions are relevant to the subject matter of the article being discussed, and do not make any personal attacks or bring personalities into the debating of any issue. Please understand that in order to debate or discuss an item at a town meeting, the subject matter must be within the scope of the article printed on the warrant. If the moderator believes that a speaker is straying from the issues, I will have to direct the speaker to limit their portion of debate to the issue. We also ask that all speakers limit their time at the microphone so that others will have an opportunity to speak and be heard. A motion to "move the question" is a procedural motion which will be taken up just like any other motion from the floor. For those of you who are new to town meeting, a motion to "move the question" is a request to end the debate and move directly to a vote on the article. To make a motion to "move the question," a person must be recognized by the moderator, approach the microphone, and the motion to "move the question" must then be immediately mentioned. You cannot take the microphone, recite your opinion about an article, and then try to shut off everyone else's debate by moving the question at the end of your discussion. Please also understand that the moderator has the ability to rule that such a motion to "move the question" is out of order if I believe that the motion is unfairly or prematurely limiting the voters' rights to hear answers to questions or to better understand the article being voted upon. Only registered voters of Abington may vote here at town meeting. Any non-resident or non-registered voter is required to sit in the area located to my far left. Any person who's not a resident or a registered voter in Abington is not allowed to speak or vote at this meeting unless the moderator uses his discretion to allow that person to do so. Due to the nature of this town meeting, and without any objection, I will be allowing the town's professional consultants and our state representative and state senator to speak and answer any questions during the meeting. Also, in accordance with our town charter, non-resident department heads and superintendents who work for our town are allowed to speak and to answer questions, and they may also sit and consult with their relevant committee or board. Understanding that many of you may have made childcare arrangements during this meeting, we ask that you turn your cellphone ringers down or off, and please take any telephone conversations out into your lobby so as not to disturb those seated around you at this town meeting. I must also point out, at request of the fire department, that in the event we do have to leave rather quickly, there are fire exits behind me on the left and right, and of course, through the doors that you came out to the rear of the building. I know Bob Kelly has already made that announcement in the cafeteria. At this time, if there is nothing else to discuss, let's get this meeting rolling. I'd like to introduce the Finance Committee Chairperson, Mr. Chad Lovett, who is responsible to make the formal motion for each article to be discussed upon for tonight's -- today's meeting. Mr. Lovett.
Article one.
Yep, Article one.
The Finance Committee motions to approve Article one as presented.
And usually, I would have read Article one. Article one is a transfer of funds from -- I'm going to need that -- from the Sellsheer Vote Tech into the reserve account. Is there anything to be heard on the Finance Committee's motion to approve Article one? If not, I'm going to ask you to raise your hand when I ask you if you're going to vote yes or no. So all those in favor of approving Article one as motion by the Finance Committee, please raise your hand. Thank you. Put your hands down. All those opposed to Article one, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, Article one passes. Article two. Article two is the motion regarding the school project. Mr. Lovett is going to read a motion that is basically statutory in nature. It's about three paragraphs long, but he's required to read it verbatim, so, Mr. Lovett, the floor is yours.
The Finance Committee moves that the town appropriate the amount of $96,400,000 for the purpose of paying costs of the construction of a new co-located middle school and high school with pre-kindergarten, to be located at 201 Richard Francis Klinowitz Way, a phased project intended to permanently house students in fifth to 12th grade, as well as the town's pre-kindergarten program, and culminating in the demolition of the existing high school building, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. The project, which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren for at least 50 years, and for which the town may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under MGL Chapter 44 or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need, as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town, provided further that any grant that the town may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 58.97% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA or the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that any appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from limitations on taxes imposed by MGL Chapter 59, Section 21(c), and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town and the MSBA.
Thank you, Mr. Lovett. The Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article two, and essentially, your vote to approve Article two would authorize the town to borrow the money and to accept the state grant in order to build the proposed school. The moderator would like to recognize the Chair of the Abington School Building Committee, Mr. Rich Testa, who will have a brief presentation for the benefit of all of us here at town meeting. Mr. Testa.
Good morning, and thank you. My name is Richard Testa. I reside at 121 Presidential Drive in Abington. Not only a resident, I'm also a parent, youth sports coach, and the chairman of the School Building Committee. The Abington School Building Committee is a 22-member committee comprised of residents, school faculty, and elected officials. The mission of the committee is to determine the most fiscally responsible and educationally appropriate solution to the town's school building needs. I'd like to quickly introduce our professional staff in the event that there are questions that I turn over to them. I'd like to introduce Mary Mahoney, our own as project manager from KBA. And I'd also like to introduce our architect team, Scott Dunlap and Troy Randall from Abington's offered a distinct opportunity in which to partner with the MSBA, where they will pay for more than half of school construction costs related to the new middle high school with a pre-K component. Over the last 10 years, the MSBA's funded nearly $11 billion in school grant construction, and that's funded through state tax dollars that are paid by all of us. One penny of the 6.25% sales tax goes to fund the MSBA. To show you the magnitude of projects that have been paid for by MSBA funding, the map of the surrounding towns indicates surrounding communities that have utilized grant funding to complete new school construction or major renovation projects within the past 20 years. The term "major renovation" is a term utilized by the MSBA to identify projects that have completed comprehensive renovations that have addressed the long-term needs of the community, both physically and educationally. As you can see indicated by the map, of the 36 surrounding communities, many of the communities have either constructed new schools in the past 10 years, have done major renovations within the past 10 years, two communities have done major renovations or construction within the past 20 years, and Abington unfortunately stands on its own as the only community that's not invested in a major renovation or construction project in more than 50 years. The committee spent nearly 5,000 collective hours, reviewed 25 sites, and 14 building options, including multiple construction and grade configuration options. Both the committee and the MSBA came to the same conclusion. The conclusion is, a single project which includes a new middle school and new high school co-located on the existing high school site is the most cost-effective means for resolving Abington's school facility and educational needs for the next 50 years. We've been fortunate in -- we've had overwhelming support from a number of town groups. The Board of Selectmen, School Committee, Finance Committee, Planning Board, Abington Educational Foundation, Green Wave Boosters, other various sports organizations, and the Rotary Club of Abington have all voted to endorse and support the proposed school construction project due to the long-term benefits it will provide not only to the students of Abington, but the community at large. Some of the benefits that will be realized during the school -- if we move forward with the school construction project are the fact that the MSBA only pays for one project. We've received a number of questions as to why we wouldn't build either a separate middle school and high school, or why we are not looking at additional school buildings. The MSBA provides us a one-time opportunity to construct one new school, and this, again, is the solution that we feel would best meet the long-term needs of the town. Some of the other benefits, the academic and educational opportunities, including the possible implementation of town-wide pre-K. We provide new 21st century learning environments for all of our students. We reduce overcrowding at all grade levels. Additionally, we're able to close two of our older and most inefficient buildings in the process. I'd like to invite Peter Schaefer up briefly to discuss the new grade configurations as well as the educational benefits that would be realized if the town proceeds with funding this project.
Moderator recognizes Mr. Peter Schaefer, the Superintendent of Schools for the Town of Abington.
Thank you very much. Importantly, this project certainly benefits the entire town of Abington, most significantly its children and the educational impact that it would have on them, because this one building project solves multiple problems in infrastructure for all children in Abington. The Beaverbrook Elementary School would become a K-1 and 2 building. It currently houses four grades, so it would reduce the overcrowding in that building. The Woodsdale School would become a 3-4 building. Obviously, the new co-located middle high school with a pre-K would provide service to the 5 through 8, 9 and 12, and our pre-K students in separate parts of a building. The Frohler Middle School would remain open for community use, administrative offices, use for the football team and the baseball team that would be using the fields behind the Frohler Middle School, and then also the gymnasium use, again, for community use would be available at the Frohler. That building is in the best condition in terms of the outer envelope and watertight, and would not require major renovations for these functions, other than some handicap ramping that would be required. In terms of the educational benefit in the new building, in the picture you can see that in the '30s and the '60s, when the buildings that were replacing were designed, education was provided to children who sat in rows and an instructor who stood at the front of the room and delivered information to children. We have retrofitted our current classrooms as best we can with technology, and to be able to serve the needs of children, and so these two pictures depict, one, how buildings were designed, and then how we are currently delivering instruction. Although you can move these desks together, and we have retrofitted the buildings as best we can, these new learning areas would be areas which provide technology, and quite a bit of technology. The technology provided is a part of this grant, and our students would benefit from the use of this technology. In terms of technology infrastructure, we'd have adequate Wi-Fi, which we don't currently have. The networking, the switches, all comes with the new building project, including safer buildings because they're designed to meet today's safety needs. In the '60s and in the Depression era, towns and schools did not have to guard against some of the incidents that have occurred unfortunately across our country in recent years. Specialized classroom space, our first-ever auditorium in the town of Abington, and again, not only would this provide our students the better environment for education, but it would be a project for the entire community with that auditorium and gym space for our Richard Testa.
Thank you, Superintendent Schaefer. The project that's before us, as indicated in the warrant article, is a $96.4 million school construction project. The MSBA will pay for approximately $50 million, or greater than half of the total construction costs. That also includes the demolition of the existing high school, the new playing fields, as well as all of the 21st century technology and learning tools that will be included within the school itself. If the town borrows 75 to 80% of its $46 million share when the construction starts in 2015, the remaining amount would then be borrowed as the town nears completion of the project. Our $46 million bond amount is the maximum amount if we assume two factors. One, that no bids come in under budget, and that, two, the town's entire $5.2 million contingency is required. The school construction project is actually closer to $91 million, but the MSBA requires that we carry a significant contingency to pay for any unforeseen conditions. Spending approximately two years and going through the feasibility study process, we don't anticipate that there are very many unforeseen conditions left at this point, but they do require that we maintain a contingency budget should funds need to be expended. Assuming that bids did come into budget, or we did not expend the entire $5.2 million contingency as budgeted, then the $96.4 million construction cost would obviously come down. Tax increases won't appear until fiscal year 17, two years from now, and at that point, we're in a very, very good borrowing position because we'll have existing debts that are rolling off of the books. The town will have paid off existing town offices, library, and the school feasibility bonds in '16. The town will pay off the existing ECC windows, ECC roof, and sewer bonds in '17. Given all those factors, I've asked Leo Provost to talk briefly about the tax impact to the residents of Abington.
Moderator recognizes our town treasurer and tax collector, Mr. Leo Provost.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good morning. I want to talk briefly about the process of how we would borrow the money, but let me first start by explaining that it cannot be done unless it's through a debt exclusion. And what a debt exclusion is, is it's a temporary increase to the taxes for the purpose of paying the principal and interest on our borrowing each and every year. So when we have completed a project, much as Rich just explained, the debt that's falling off, it'll then come out of the tax base. To approve a debt exclusion, it does require a townwide vote, a ballot vote by all the registered voters. Now, for several months, you may have seen charts that showed the estimated tax effect if we were to borrow $46 million, and the rates that we've used, we believe, are in the ballpark for the timeframe in which we would borrow the money. The good news is that we wouldn't really borrow $46 million all at once. At the start of the project, which is slated for the end of calendar year 2015, which is the town's fiscal year 2016, we would go out and borrow roughly 75 to 80%, so I've used a figure of $36 million. That's 78% of the total project of $46 million. Now, there's a couple reasons that we would only borrow that much, and that's because we really don't know if this project's going to be $41 million or $46 million, or somewhere in between. So we obviously don't want to get all of the money. And the second thing is that, under municipal law, you need to spend the money within a two-year process, and we will not have completed the entire project and paid for everything within that time period. I believe that the construction of the new school would be completed, but then there's still the dismantling of the existing building that we're in now, and some field work and things of that nature. So $36 million, I think, is a very good place to start, and up on the screen, you can see the tax effect in the first year, which would be -- you'd see that on an FY17 tax bill. So the nice thing is, is that that's a lower amount than what's been shown in the past against a $46 million borrowing, and simply because we're not borrowing all the money. Now, by the time we get to needing additional monies, we're going to be two to even three years into this project, and as a result, we're going to have paid down more than $3 million on our first borrowing of the 36. So now you're really in the range of $32 to $33 million of outstanding debt still on the books from the first borrowing. So at the time we know the final amounts, and we go out to borrow, that number's going to be somewhere between $5 million and $10 million, depending on whether the project comes in closer to $41 or $46. And if you put those two numbers together, because that's what the tax effect will be in that year that we finally borrow the second installment, we're probably looking at fiscal year 2019 or even '20. That'll be less than the numbers that you're being shown in that $46 million column. The other good news is that at the conclusion of FY16, we have debt rolling off the books, and what we're showing you up on the screen is the amount of tax dollars that were in your 2014 tax bill associated with that debt that will no longer exist. And then we're also showing you, because we have other debt coming off the books in FY17, the amount of money that will roll off of your tax bill. So I think that it really does put the town in a very good position as far as timing goes. The other reason that my preference would be to run out and borrow as much money as we can at the start of the project is because the rate environments have been historically low for a long, long time, and I've been watching them and I've been worrying, because if you read the papers and the news, you will hear that rates are going to be climbing. Now fortunately, and much to my surprise, they have not moved yet. They think they might in calendar 2015, but again, we're well-positioned timewise to run out there and grab the bulk of our money while they're still low. So that is pretty much the borrowing process. Just for example, in our FY16 tax bills, we have to raise, for the purpose of debt exclusions, just over $1,500,000. The good news is, is that before we look at what happens here today and in the ballot vote, based on debt that we have today, that number in FY18 is dropping to $728,000, so it's really being cut in half before we look at bringing on the school if that's approved. So again, that kind of puts us in a really nice position for that. Also, within the past year, our rating with Standard &amp; Poor's has actually increased. We've bumped up another notch. We are a double A, Standard &amp; Poor's rating. Now, the top rating is a triple A, and then it goes double A+, and then we're in there at a double A. So we're investment-grade. It should help in achieving a decent rate when it comes time to borrow. So that's going in our favor as well. So that's kind of the process of how we would obtain the money and when we would obtain the money, and some estimated figures for what it might cost. We've given a couple of examples as far as the assessed value of your property. You know, we have more lengthier charts with all kinds of values, but if anybody wants to know any other numbers, you can just see me anytime.
Thank you, Mr. Provost.
You're welcome.
Moderator would like to recognize again the chairman of the School Building Committee, Mr. Richard Testa.
Thank you, Treasurer Provost. So if this were to be approved at town meeting today, this will just give you a general idea of the timeline that we would be seeing moving forward. If it were to pass at town meeting today, we would then proceed with a ballot vote on October 18. That vote requires a majority vote. From there, we would then move into design development through construction, beginning the fall 2014 and through fall of 2015. We'd begin bidding fall 2015 with construction beginning December 2015. That process would take place two years, with construction of the new facility being completed in December 2017. At that point, we would do a mid-year transition of the students from the old schools into the new school, and we would then begin site demolition and field work for through 2018. At this point, we'd like to open it up for questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Testa, Mr. Provost, and Mr. Schaefer. The motion on the floor is the Finance Committee's motion to approve Article two in accordance with the motion that they read aloud to you. At this point, if there's anyone who would like to speak, ask a question, share an opinion, I invite you to please approach the microphone in the room that you're sitting in. Please state your name and address, and we'll do our best to respond if you have a request. All right, we do have -- no one in the cafeteria. Come right up. Please state your name and address, even if you think I know you.
I know you know me. Rosie Villa, 55 Barry Road in Abington. I'm certainly not opposed to new schools for children today, and the safety factor, and better educational facilities within the school, but what I am concerned about is the possibility of the water runoff from these fields, and that it might affect our neighborhoods right behind them. Can you guarantee that there will not be a problem and our homes won't be flooded out? We're already in wetlands.
Thank you, Mrs. Villa.
We absolutely can. I'd like to invite up either Scott or Troy to discuss the water mitigation, as well as the requirements for rainwater runoff.
Moderator recognizes Mr. Scott Dunlap, one of the principals of AI3, the professional architect consultants for the town of Abington.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Chairman Testa, as part of the feasibility study process over the last two years, [inaudible 00:05:29]. As part of the feasibility study process over the last two years, certainly, an enormous amount of work has been done investigating the existing site, the surrounding areas. We're very familiar with the fact that there's an intermittent stream that runs around the perimeter of the property and that there are wetlands off the border of the property. So as part of the design and analysis process, we've had to look at those areas. We brought in geotechnical engineers, hydrology engineers, to take a look at the site and make certain that what's being proposed could be done without impacting the abutters and in fact improving the drainage situation on the site. One of the significant problems with the site currently is it has no drainage facilities, it has no drainage capacity, it has very, very little ability to take stormwater on the site, recharge it into the soils. Instead, the current site allows that stormwater to run off of the site into the abutting areas, into the stream, into those wetland areas. As part of this project, we are required by law to make certain that we do a complete engineering analysis, we design a complete underground stormwater management system, and that we take that water that's now running off of the site and that we keep it on the site and recharge it into the soils. So that currently, there's been a system designed for taking that water that literally has 400 times the capacity of the current site to take that water, keep it on-site, recharge it into the soils, bring the elevation or the height of the current site up so it's not in a low area, and at the same time, capture and recharge all of that water into the soil. And over the next 18 months, we'll be finalizing the design of that system, submitting it both to the state and locally for confirmation that it works. But absolutely guaranteed, we've been involved in this kind of project many times in the last 20 years and beyond, and certainly know how to deal with those issues and have designed a system here that will be able to alleviate those problems and actually make the site condition better for both the school and the abutting properties.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap. Mrs. Villa, you all set?
So we all know that best-laid plans sometimes have problems along the way. You spoke about a contingency fund. I mean, if something goes wrong, you guys will absolutely take care of our homes for us?
We will absolutely ensure that the rainwater that's shedded off the site is less than what presently exists, so.
Okay.
In addition to the rainwater mitigation that Scott mentioned, we will also be doing gray water collection on the entire roof, so all the water that actually hits the roof of the new proposed building, and I can give you, just give you a general idea of scale of the building on the site. All the rainwater that hits the roof actually will never even go into the land. That water will be collected on the roof, and that'll be used within the urinals and the toilets throughout the school as well. So that, in addition to what Scott had mentioned, will again continue to mitigate any rainwater shed off to the abutting properties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I forget, and I hate to embarrass you, but Kerry Bonvey, when the meeting is over, I have your driver's license up here. Would anyone else like to share an opinion or ask a question? Okay, so everyone has their mind made up? Oh, you have, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator, I'm Chris O'Neil, 70 Diane Circle, and motion to move the question.
I'm going to just, I appreciate that. I'm going to just ask it one final time while there's so many people here. If anyone would like to ask a question or has a comment, and if not, we will go to the actual vote. So one final request, don't be shy, but at the same time, I know it's a beautiful day out there. All right, then that being said, we will proceed with taking a vote on Article II. Yes, I'm going to ask if you could, any of the town clerk staff that was outside working, if the people in the lobby could alert them to now come in if they'd like to take part in the voting. Anyone on the clerk staff and anyone who is standing right now in the back of the gymnasium, I'm going to ask you to move and stand behind the seats on the floor so that eventually you will be counted. Please get away from the doorways. If you're in the cafeteria, I hope you're all in a seat, and if I could ask the people who I have appointed earlier to count to please rise and go to your assigned areas, go right ahead. I'm going to put my minions to work here. I'm going to wait. What we will be doing in just a second, as the town clerk staff moves in here, is I'm going to ask that our public safety officials and our volunteers are going to now monitor the doors and not allow anyone to enter the gym. No one is allowed to enter the cafeteria once we begin the voting process. No one will be allowed to enter until after the vote is announced. If you feel you have to leave during the vote, that's fine, but just know that you will not be allowed back into the gym once we start counting. For purposes of this count, and because it is a bond borrowing article, I do need to actually get a count of how many people want to vote yes and how many people want to vote no. So for those of you who watched our video that we sent out on the internet, we will be asking you to rise and stand in just a minute and be counted. The people who are counting your section will tell you after they've counted your row that you can sit down. They'll count the next row and they'll go through their section, so please remain standing until that you are asked to sit down. When we, when they report their counts of the yes voting, we'll then ask those who would like to vote no, who oppose the article would then stand, and we will also count those votes and report those numbers. We will also wait for the numbers from the cafeteria will be called in to me, and we'll total everything up, and if you be patient with us and maintain a little sense of quiet, we'll announce a final total in hopefully within about five minutes from now. Any questions on the voting procedure? Okay, there being none, and everyone is now, my counters are standing. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's motion to authorize the Town Treasurer to borrow the funds needed to proceed with the final design and construction of the proposed new school and to accept the MSBA state grant funds as delineated in their motion, please stand and remain standing until your row is asked to be seated. Yep, you're up. You're going to count, and your counters will give you their numbers, and you total up your room, and then I'll wait for you to tell me. My people are going to announce it on the PA system here. Thank you. For Mr. DeCarlo and for Ms. McAlpine, you're going to count the people standing behind your section. Look at the camera, she wants to take a picture. To the mic. Go to the mic. Huh? As you finish your counting, please go to the microphone to announce your count, and I'll try to keep a tally up front. Mr. Wing?
Forty-six, yes.
One-four-six?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo? Ginny O'Brien?
Seventy-eight.
Maureen McAlpine?
One-oh-six.
One-oh-six. Kathleen Riley?
Thirty-nine.
Mr. Wakelin?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three. Mr. Donlin?
Graduate of 1973, class of 1973, Abington High School, proudly says 156 votes.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight. Thank you. The gym, the cafeteria has a total of 185 votes in the affirmative. All right, at this time, all those opposed to the Finance Committee's motion for Article II, please stand and remain standing until your row is asked to be seated. Ms. Jansen?
Two.
Two. Mr. Donlin from the class of?
Zero.
Zero.
1973.
Seventy-three. Mr. Wing?
Zero.
Zero. Mr. Ms. McAlpine?
Class of 1984, zero.
Mr. Wakelin?
Three.
Three. Mrs. Riley?
Class of 1984.
1984 votes. Okay. Mr. DeCarlo?
Two.
Two. Ms. O'Brien?
Zero.
Zero. Thank you. Just to confirm, where's my wife? Five-nine, right, on the yeses? We're double and triple checking. We have the final tallies for those registered voters present and voting. Moderator declares the final vote to be 961 in the affirmative, 20 in the negative. The vote passes the two-thirds margin. Now, I want you to recognize how easy and fun it is to be at town meeting. So when you get your next invitation, I hope you'll join us. Ladies and gentlemen, before we adjourn, I just want to ask you to please drive slowly and carefully as you exit the facility. There are a lot of people and a lot of cars. Whether you're excited, upset, thrilled, please drive carefully. Mr. Testa makes a motion to adjourn the town meeting. I declare the special town meeting of September 27th to be adjourned at 10:50 a.m.